Morning. I'd like to call the, uh, July the 22nd, I hope my watch is right, July 22nd meeting to order. And I am the new president of the Mobile County Commission, but I would like to take just a moment and thank outgoing President Connie Hudson for an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We had a lot of tough issues and she did a great job of handling it in a professional manner and I just hope I can do a percentage of it that well.
Sure you will.
Thank you. We will start with our invocation and also our pledge. Invocation today is by Reverend, uh, is it Pauline Anderson? Did I get that right? I got close? Okay. She's with the great, uh, Zine Baptist Church on Franklin Street in Mobile. So everyone rise please.
This morning, our heavenly Father, we come before thy throne of grace. Before we ask you for anything, God, we want to say thank you for giving us another day. God, as we have come before you, we come invoking your presence into this meeting. We pray, God, for the council members, the commissioners, God, we pray for our mayor, we pray for our city and our state. And now, God, we ask you to bless all these, thy people, who have come to bring their issues and their concerns before this body. And, God, we pray that you will unite us as one, Lord God, and we pray, Lord God, that you will give us wisdom and the knowledge to know how to respond to each other. Help us to respond in respect, Lord God. Help us to acknowledge you at all times and above all, God, help us to be reminded that we are servants of the Most High God and as we serve one another, we are also serving you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kathy, do we have any speakers?
We don't have any speakers this morning, but we have the several presentations. I know you wanted to go to the back of the auditorium for the one on ADA.
You want to start with that one or do it last?
Sure. That's fine.
Start with that one? Okay. Ladies, we're going both. Y'all want to stay here or? First thing, we want to make sure that they get a challenge coin that we give, give to our special guests. You're certainly one of the special guests. I'm going to read this. Today, we're recognizing the American, Americans with Disability Act, better known as the ADA. Whereas the American, Americans with Disability Act, ADA, was passed on July the 26th, 1990 to secure the civil rights of citizens with disability. The legislation clearly established a clear and comprehensive national mandate. Excuse me just a second. I'm out of breath. Yeah. Are you? Oh, nothing like getting old. Establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disability. And whereas the Mobile County, Alabama, affirms the principles of equality and exclusion, inclusion of persons with disability as set forth by the state of Alabama and is emboldened by the ADA. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disability by reducing barriers and changing perspectives and increasing full participation in community life. However, excuse me, whomever the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to the continuous, continuing our efforts to fully implement the ADA. Resolved that Mobile County Commission does hereby recognize July the 26th, 2019 as the 29th anniversary of the American, Americans with Disability Act. Furthermore, we also acknowledge the progress that has been made by affirming the principles and equality and inclusion and recommending, recommending our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. It wouldn't be me if something didn't go wrong. Signed by all three commissioners, Jerry Carl, Merseria Ludgood and Connie Hudson.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody. Yes, good morning. Okay, I'm a waterhead as of lately because I took over as the interim executive director of the Independent Living Center and of Mobile, you guys, and this has been a long time coming for me and, uh, give me a minute. After 32 years of being in a chair, I'm hearing a voice for the thousands and hundreds and millions around the world. I can speak for myself that, uh, since 1987, I've seen tremendous leaps and bounds for awareness and accessibility, changes. And you guys know as we're human, we never know what tomorrow's going to bring. And, um, I'm very glad to be here this morning. And Commissioner President Carl and Commissioners Ludgood and Hudson, on behalf of the Independent Living Center, we'd like to thank you for this recognition and for the opportunity to speak with you today. And to follow up with, with what President Carl said, it was on July 26th of 1990 that the Americans with Disability Act, or as we call it, the ADA, was signed into law. On Friday, July the 26th, we will celebrate the 29th anniversary of that signing. The ADA provides guidelines and protections for some 54 million people in the United States who have disabilities to be more fully included in all of the activities of their community. And me personally, I can speak for hundreds I've met around the world, having played wheelchair basketball for 28 years and having competed in the Olympics in 1996. I have met hundreds and hundreds around the world. The ADA assures the rights of people with disabilities in areas of employment, public services provided by state and local governments, public accommodations and services operated by private entities, telecommunications in various miscellaneous areas such as construction and design regulations. The ADA has opened many doors to people with disabilities and provided many supports and accommodations that have made participation in community life more readily accessible. The mission of the Independent Living Center of Mobile is to foster and promote programs which empower persons with disabilities to attain their maximum degree of independence while providing them with education, advocacy and protection of their personal rights. We celebrate our partnership with the Mobile County Commission in fostering compliance with the ADA and the commissioners' resolve as outlining the ADA Transition Plan by Ms. Martha Durant. ADA Coordinator provides a framework for retaining progress, progress already made and approaching any new areas of challenge. And as you guys know, we face challenges every day, whether it's getting on a bus, going down the sidewalk, even me coming down here to park today, I had to park on the street right above the tunnel, get out in my chair and had to go into the main street because there was some damage there. Not complaining, just giving you issues of what we face every day. And if you want to hear complaints, you're not going to hear them from us because we're about the easiest going nicest people you're going to, you know, we just love, love what we do and when we're together, it's a little bit better. So we appreciate the support of both the city and the county governments in Mobile and efforts to promote the ADA. We will also receive recognition from the city of Mobile and have an opportunity to have representatives speak at the city council meeting on Tuesday, July the 30th. We invite you to join us on that day in the lobby of the Mobile Municipal Complex following the city council meeting for birthday cake celebrating the anniversary of the ADA. That'll be next Tuesday, everybody. We would also like to invite you to attend a Community Resource Fair in celebration of the anniversary of the ADA on Wednesday, July the 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Fountain Area inside the Shops of Bel Air, formerly known as Bel Air Mall, and adjoining to the J.C. Penney Store entrance. So one more time, before I turn this over to our president of our Chair of the People for People, Mr. Matthew Johnson, we also have Ms. Debbie Hicks and Mr. Kevin Smith here along with us this morning. And you guys might recognize Kevin out in West Mobile because you might see him at the, at the Firehouse Subs and then you might see him over at Walmart by Providence Hospital and then you might see him at the mall. He rides in his chair all over town. It's amazing. It is absolutely amazing. In fact, that's how I met him. I pulled him over on the side of the road and said, "What up?" So that, ladies and gentlemen, is Kevin Smith. Okay, so at this time, thank you all for coming. At this time, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Matthew Johnson, the Chair of our People for People, Consumers Advocacy Group, Advocacy Group of the Independent Living Center and allow him to share some of his thoughts and comments. And one more thing, let's recognize Mr. Jim Flor and Mr. Eddie Sheen for coming. Eddie's our driver and, and Jim is our independent specialist outreach. Just thank him for coming down. He's the one that organizes all this and this is the man of many, many talents right here, okay? Thank you all. This is Mr. Matthew Johnson.
Hi, I'm Matthew. I actually lost my leg during Desert Storm, so I don't have a leg now. I'm just leg up on you. If, if you want to know how good Mobile is, Mobile should be the premier city and county in the entire United States because if you don't, we, we can make, we can make the county and the city accessible to all, including the transit, the sidewalks, the, uh, the connection between here. If you can get in a wheelchair, and I challenge everyone in this room to get in a wheelchair and try to ride or go anywhere in the city of Mobile and try to get in there. And if you want to go to the bathroom, that's even more challenge because now you can't get in the door. If you can get in the door, I'll take my challenge. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Debbie Hicks and I just wanted to tell you very briefly, uh, examples of how the American with Disabilities Act has made my life better and hopefully enabled me to be a better contributor to this community. I found myself in this chair unexpectedly about four years ago as a result of a medical error and life changed for me radically from that moment on. I have the great fortune of living at a time where more open attitudes in the community and the support of the American with Disabilities Act enables me to live more fully. I live independently in my home. One of my neighbors has scoted me because my yard man didn't come and my grass looks terrible. I don't cook as big a meals as I used to and I rarely make homemade cornbread, but I do, I do go to the grocery store and shop. I cook. I'm a little behind on the cleaning at times, but mostly it's pretty good. I enjoy scholarship. I was working on a PhD earlier. So I, because of the American with Disabilities Act and there being accessible buses and airplanes, I can get on a bus, go to academic conferences where I'm judged on the strength of my mind rather than the strength of my body and share a little bit about the history and beauty of the communities in this area. I also was fortunate recently that I went to Dallas for treatment that's not available locally that may help me treat, to slow the loss of use of my right side and possibly regain some, some use. That's my prayer anyway. And because the American with Disabilities Act enables, um, different cities and counties having transit systems for people with disabilities, I was met at the Dallas-Fort Worth Airport by a wheelchair accessible van because they honored the certification that the Mobile Transit System with a wheelchair accessible transit had authorized for me. And for three bucks, I rode 30 miles to the Presbyterian Hospital Guest House. And that is something that as an American, I have the opportunity because this is a national law. This is not a local law. And I also found that I can contribute still. It may be in small ways. I watch my neighbors' children. I volunteer with my local party, political party. I am someone who still has a sense of humor and I simply love being out on the front porch waving at my neighbors and talking in the evening. And I will tell you that I really loved camping. I loved primitive camping. And some of that at this time is not accessible to me, but I still find that because the ADA, I can again, um, get on a plane, travel to Oklahoma, meet some friends who share common interests and camp. And fortunately, they have a wheelchair accessible potty from the host community because the outhouses were not wheelchair accessible. With that bit of accommodation, I was one of about seven people out of 100 who used wheelchairs or mobility devices that I counted. So I ask you to recognize that we remain your neighbors and your family members. We're a part of your community. We all want to contribute as much as possible. We all want to live fully, laugh and yes, deal with the complaints about the grass being, not being cut, which I tried to figure out a way I could do it from a wheelchair, but I just couldn't. And so the one thing I will say also is that the Americans with Disabilities Act offering fuller, offering fuller access to community life is a frugal measure. Because I live independently at home by myself, that even if I needed medical support or supportive services like home health or rehab coming out, I would still live according to insurance company studies independently at less than 40% of the cost of living in a skilled care facility. So your investment in improving our lives as individuals and families is your investment in conserving your tax dollars. And for that, that foresight, which was largely led with, by, um, American veterans with disabilities were the major, um, the major voice in support of this legislation, all to whom we all, I believe, owe a strong appreciation for their service. I, I thank you for letting me share with you today and I'm very grateful to be a part of your communities.
Well, thank you all for joining. Did you want to get a picture real quick, all of us together? Yeah, let's get a picture. Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
It is my privilege this morning to make a special presentation. I'd like to ask Dr. Bill Barick and his wife, Jessica Barick, to join us, please. For those of you who are unaware, Friday was Dr. Barick's last day on the job. He has retired from, as Executive Director, from Bellingrath Gardens and Home. And after nearly 20 years, I guess since 1999, correct? And it's, it's just, it's going to be hard to imagine, uh, when, when I think of Bellingrath Gardens, I think of the two of you. I mean, it's just an, an automatic association now. You have been tremendous. We are so fortunate and so blessed that the two of you decided to move to our area and that you took the job at Bellingrath Gardens and Home because you have done so much to preserve and enhance the legacy of Walter and Bessie Bellingrath and, and words are not adequate, but we do, we do thank you so very much. And we have a resolution in your honor. It's a commendation of professional achievement for Dr. William Bill Barick. Whereas for two decades, Dr. Bill Barick has served as Executive Director of Bellingrath Gardens and Home and is well-known for his court horticulture, horticultural expertise, innovation and creative design skills. On the occasion of his retirement, we take the opportunity to recognize and applaud his outstanding contributions to Mobile County. And whereas Dr. Barick graduated from Auburn University with bachelor's and master's degrees, he then went on to get his doctoral degree in landscape horticulture from Michigan State University in East Lansing. After graduation, he served as an assistant professor in ornamental horticulture at the University of Florida in Gainesville. He is now an affiliate professor in ornamental horticulture at Auburn University and has served on the Auburn University Agricultural Advisory Committee before working at Bellingrath. He served as Vice, Executive Vice President and Director of Gardens at Callaway Gardens in Pine Mountain, Georgia for almost 20 years where he was praised for his exquisite sense of design. And whereas in his years at Bellingrath, he has helped make the gardens a major tourist destination on the Gulf Coast. He significantly improved horticultural displays throughout the gardens and redesigned and expanded the annual Magic Christmas in Lights attraction, which was voted one of the 10 best public light displays in America in 2014. Dr. Barick and his wife, Jessica, have greatly expanded Bellingrath's outreach in the Mobile community and their successful membership program, special events and renovations and redesigns. He is also incredibly involved in his community as he serves on several boards of civic and community organizations. Dr. Barick has represented Alabama in BP's effort to promote tourism in states affected by the oil spill. And whereas his numerous honors include receiving the Arthur Hoyt Scott Horticultural Medal in 1994, the Governor's Tourism Award from the Alabama Tourism Department in 2012, American Horticultural Society's Liberty Hyde Bailey Award and the Auburn University College of Agriculture's Outstanding Alumni Award for the Horticultural Program in 2015. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission commends Dr. William Bill Barick on his many years of dedicated service to Bellingrath Gardens and Home. Furthermore, we proclaim, and, and I know the city proclaimed you Bill Barick Day, but we're doing it in the county also, which is a bigger area.
Yes.
It was July 22nd, 2019, as Dr. Bill Barick Day in Mobile County. We extend our heartfelt best wishes to him and his wife, Jessica, for many years of good health, happiness and blessings, which they so richly deserve.
Thank you, Connie, and other commissioners. This has been a joy for me to work at Bellingrath Gardens and Home. It is a wonderful garden. It is an amazing place, but this resolution really acknowledges the work of all of the employees at Bellingrath Gardens and Home for their tireless efforts to preserve and enhance Walter and Bessie Bellingrath's legacy. Again, we want to thank you for this recognition and we hope that all of you feel like that Bellingrath is one of the jewels in the county's crown. So thank you again for all your support.
Very well. And good luck on retirement.
We will next observe National Health Center Week, August 4th through the 8th, 2019. Whereas for more than 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, primary and preventative health care in our nation's most underserved communities. And whereas community health centers employ more than 200,000 people nationwide, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants and certified nurse midwives who all work to treat the whole patient, health centers reduce overall costs by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of expensive healthcare settings. Community health centers nationally generate about $24 million in savings for the healthcare system. And whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, along with their dedicated staffs, board members and all those responsible for their continued success and growth. And whereas community health centers are locally owned and operated small businesses, they help to power local economies in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. And whereas in celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve, we observe the 40th anniversary of the Mobile County Health Department's Family Health Center. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim August 4th through the 8th, 2019 as National Health Center Week in Mobile County. And furthermore, we applaud the vital role that local health centers, including Mobile County Health Department, Franklin Primary Healthcare, Mostella Medical Clinic and Bayou Clinic play in shaping the future of our healthcare system in Mobile County. And this is signed by Jerry Carl, President, Commissioners Connie Hudson and Merseria Ludgood.
Thank you, Mobile County Commission, for honoring the Mobile County Health Department and its Primary Care Division, Family Health, in celebrating National Health Center Week. National Health Center Week is a week-long celebration honoring the mission and the accomplishments of America's health centers. The theme for this year is America's health centers rooted in communities and we truly believe that if we plant in good works, we can see our potential grow at the Mobile County Health Department. So thank you so much for honoring us. I'd like to mention that our Communications Department will be putting out a press release later today about all of the great things happening, some special screenings and events at all of our Mobile County Primary Care, Family Health Centers throughout Mobile County. So we're going to be experiencing some of those, including our mobile medical unit. So thank you guys so much for this and honoring the Mobile County Health Department. Thank you.
All right, this is my favorite part. Watermelon queens. All right, I am so blessed to, come on ladies, it's all about y'all. Y'all get in the middle. I'm so blessed to have Grand Bay in my district and get to deal with the watermelon, watermelon festival every year. And these are our queens, which will represent 2019?
Yes, they will.
2019?
They will until May of next year.
Until May of next year. Isn't that a pretty group? All right, I'm going, I promise I'm going to try my best not to mess your names up, okay? Let's start with, is it Casey? Cassie, I told you, I started with it. Cassie Reynolds. Get you to hold that. Emma? Kate? Hey. Toms, I'm sorry. All right. Vivian Wood? Sophie Davis? Sophie Davis. And our queen of queens, Courtney Jo Brown. And I present to you the Watermelon Queens from Grand Bay, Alabama, 2019.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Judy Miller Peru, and I'm the Director and Coordinator for the Queens Pageant. These girls represent Grand Bay proudly. They help us to get the word out about the Watermelon Festival. We make many, many appearances, but this is one, this is one of the days we really look forward to. We get to be here with Mr. Carl, and we want to say thank you for everything you do for us in South Mobile County, and wish you the best in whatever comes next for you. Okay? If y'all have never been to the Watermelon Festival, it's half a day on July 3rd, all day July 4th. July 4th is all the ice-cold watermelon that you can eat, and it's donated from Sessions Farms in Grand Bay. The girls have some of our programs from this year we want to give to the commission and to the staff, and if there are any left over, we'll, you know, hand them out to y'all. But thank you so much for having us here today.
We have a lot of moving parts this morning, so we're kind of faking our way through it. We'll kind of dig through it. So, if you don't mind, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Glenn, would you like to start?
Sure would, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Number one, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard.
Oh, I'm thinking something else. Is there anyone here to be heard, like to speak now? Okay, let's move on.
Number three, it was voted at the conference. Number four, adopt a resolution authorizing joint purchasing agreement with the City of Balabatri for the purchases off the county annual bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve a joint purchasing agreement with the City of Balabatri, Balabatri to pay the cost of all materials purchased off the county's annual bid.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve reappointment of Jack Tillman to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Mobile Sports Authority, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve amending the 2019 capital improvement plan to add project estimated costs as follows. Turnerville Volunteer Fire Department, $267,184. This amendment creates project for the Turnerville Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of a fire truck, and also allocates $267,184 from CIP 2019 District 1 funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve amending the 2019 capital improvement plan to add project and estimated costs as follows. Sims Senior Center Addition, $200,000. This amendment creates Project Sims Senior Center Addition, and also allocates $200,000 from the CIP 2019 District 2.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve contract with Mobile Band of Choctaw Indians in amount of $15,000 from District 1 funds to build a pavilion for the community activities and events.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve contract with Theodore High School Band Boosters Club in amount of $4,000 from District 3 funds to purchase band instruments.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve award bid to Tendall Construction LLC for Sims Senior Center Addition for their total bid in the amount of $878,672.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, take the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve renewal of software maintenance contract with Blue Alley for VMware's VCenter server in amount of $3,0538.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve renewal of annual maintenance agreement with DLT Solutions LLC for Solo Winds Net Flow Traffic Analyzer Module for Solo Winds Network Performance Monitor SL 2000 in amount of $5,433,04.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve renewal of software license description for Abacus IT Solutions LLC for GFI Land Guard for pushing updates and security patches for desktops and servers in amount of $2,0750.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve correction to the April 8, 2019 minutes Agenda Item #16 to read as.
You've, uh.
Number 16.
We went from.
I'm sorry, I skipped the page.
Fifty, we should go to 16.
Okay. Number 16, approve renewal of support services with TSA for 4 HPE DL 380G9 servers in the amount of $5,99360.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, adopt a resolution authorizing sole source contract with Data Ventures LLC for renewal of software maintenance on laser fish in the amount of $16,500.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve contract with Mosaic Community Planning for consulting services in amount not to exceed $50,000 for planning, coordination, and preparation.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, authorize acceptance of a grant award and sub-reception agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservative and Natural Resources for the Mobile County Blue Way Trail Development for the amount of $773,746.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve correction to the April 8, 2019 minutes Agenda Item #16 to read as follows. Authorize amendment to the cooperative agreement with the Mobile County municipalities who wish to remain part of the Urban County, and authorize the County Commission President to execute all documents.
And the word consortium is being removed from Urban County. So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve correction to the April 8, 2019 minutes Agenda Item #17 to read as follows. Authorize entering into a cooperative agreements with municipalities that wish to join the HUD entitlement Urban County, and authorize the County Commission President to execute all documents. The word consortium is removed from Urban County.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, authorize advertisement for requests for qualifications for projects Dolphin Island Causeway Shoreline Restoration, Visibilities Study, Engineering, and Design.
So moved.
Second.
23, approve agreement with TSA for purchase of 75 computers at $824 each for a total amount of $61,800, and 130 desktop monitors at $168 each for a total amount of $21,840, County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve the contract with African Town Community Development Corporation in the amount of $10,000 from District 1 funds for its clogging and the pipeline initiative contingent upon receipt of paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve suspension of Section 2.20 of the Mobile County Commission Employee Handbook Policy Manual, bereavement leave pending approval of the Mobile County Personnel Board.
So moved.
Second.
26, approve the Commission District 2 Love Your Community Challenge Award as follows. A, Board of School Commissioners of Board of County for the benefit of Just For Developmental Laboratory, 1,500. B, Alpine Hills Community Action Group, 1,500. C, Halesdale Heights Homeowners Association, 1,000. D, Board of School Commissioners of Board of Mobile County for the benefit of Davidson High School, 1,000. E, Connie Hudson Mobile Senior Regional Community Center Foundation, 500. And F, Ahe Road.
Ahe.
Road Community Action Group, 500.
So moved.
Second.
27, adopt a resolution authorizing request of the Licensed Commissioners Office to dispose of certain items.
So moved.
Second.
28, authorize sub-reception agreement with Ozanum Charity Pharmacy, Inc., for an amount of up to $25,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide prescription drug assistance under the Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
Second.
29, authorize sub-reception agreement with the Child Advocacy Center, Inc., for an amount of up to $25,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide services to child abuse victims.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, authorize sub-reception agreement with the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission for an amount of up to $10,000 of the Community Development Block Grant for the Grand Bay Sales Senior Center Home Deliver Meals Program.
So moved.
Second.
31, authorize sub-reception agreement with Sims Women's Club, Inc., for an amount of up to $50,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds for staff costs for the Sims Senior Center.
So moved.
Second.
32, authorize sub-reception agreement with Legal Services Alabama, Inc., for an amount up to $50,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide civil legal assistance to a homeless prevention project.
So moved.
Second.
33, authorize sub-reception agreement with City of Satsumon for an amount up to $9,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide transportation services for senior and disabled persons.
So moved.
Second.
34, adopt a resolution authorizing request of the Sheriff's Office Department to dispose of certain items.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve appointment of Beth Lyons to serve on the Board of Directors of the Dolphin Island Water and Sewer Authority.
So moved.
Second.
36, approve contract with Friends of African American Heritage Trail in amount of $10,000 from District 1 funds to purchase historical markers.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve sponsorship with Loblawi Resorts Doing Businesses Loblawi Farm in amount of $750 from District 2 funds for its Down South Grill Fest Festival.
So moved.
Second.
38, approve acceptance of grant funds from the J.L. Betzel Foundation in amount of $10,000 for a shade structure at the Mobile County Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Second.
39, approve contract with the City of Creola in amount of $11,222 matching funds for a grant to the City of Creola for the purchase of a 12-plus-two transportation bus.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, recommend approving annual renewal of the Bentley Select Program for Power Inrels Microstation and Inroll Survey CAD Software and Support for Engineering and Public Works Department. Total cost is $11,882.
So moved.
Second.
41, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Angon Estates, and approving preliminary and final plat of Athia Sullivan Acres.
So moved.
And another one, excuse me, on the next page, and approving the preliminary and final plat of MNT Legacy.
So moved on that as well.
Second.
42, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of the right-of-way deed and easement from the following property owner for the following project.
So moved.
Second.
43, recommend approving final plat of Amelia Lake Phase 4 Subdivision and accepting road right-of-ways as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets, Gwen Court Polos Avenue White Avenue, Amelia Drive East.
So moved.
Well.
I'm sorry.
And accept the roads in this subdivision for the maintenance by Mobile County together with the drainage system as it affects said roads and accepts the warranty deed for the right-of-ways indicated in this plat.
So moved.
Second.
44, recommend approving this CE&amp;I Agreement with Burke Klein Peter, Inc., in the amount of $190,768.55 for construction, engineering, and inspection services.
So moved.
Second.
45, recommend awarding combined bid for the project Mount Brining Streets resurfacing in amount of $179,425.90, and Sam Jones Avenue Railroad Street resurfacing in amount of $110,851.10 to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for their total low bid in the amount of $290,277.
So moved.
Second.
46, recommend assigning contract for professional engineering, design, and construction inspection services for Sweet Town Road Drainage Improvements to McCroy and Williams, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
47, recommend approving finishing and delivering 184 cubic yards of washed sand for cubic yards of recycled asphalt pavement and sweeping the parking lot of Alma Bryant High School. Estimated cost is $5,009,230.6.
So moved.
Second.
48, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 4 in amount of $25,000, Track 10 in amount of $40,000, and Track 32 in amount of $15,370 for Project Johnson Road Engraving, Grade, Drain, Base, and Pave.
So moved.
Second.
49, recommend disapproving preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision of Lot 4 Gen Acres. The county engineer has determined that this plat does not meet the Mobile County subdivision regulations.
For clarification, an affirmative vote is for disapproving. So moved.
Second.
Number 50, consider waiving Section 4.43 of Mobile County subdivision regulations and approving preliminary and final plat re-subdivision of Lot 6-17 Collective Places Phase 3. This was previously approved by the City of Mobile Planning Commission. The Engineering Department has no objections to the granting of this waiver.
So moved.
Second.
51, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with Southern Land Development LLC Project Randolph Foster Road, decreasing the contract by $632.
So moved.
Second.
52, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with Chris Brewer Contracting, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Number 53, adopting a resolution authorizing Mobile County Commission to approve closeout of 2,000 pay-as-you-go program. Commission.
So moved.
Second.
And number 54, commission announcements and/or comments.
President Carl, we did have a speaker on that disapproval item. I'm sorry we overlooked him, but he wanted to address the commission on the item for disapproval. Can you hear him?
Which number was that?
Forty-nine.
Number forty, forty-nine, ten, E? I'm sorry, okay? Let's start over.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner.
Give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying, 5588 Jackson Road, Mobile 36619. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Anthony Pritchett. What we have before you is a one-lot subdivision of seven acres of property that abuts Meadow Avenue along with Prince Drive that is immediately adjacent to King's Branch Estates near Sims, area north of Moffitt. We are here seeking that a one-lot subdivision be allowed at the end of this Meadow Avenue, which is privately maintained. It abuts a public right-of-way that is county-maintained just to the east. Mr. Pritchett is selling this property to his brother to build a home site on, and Mr. Pritchett is retaining five acres to the west to build his home site. Mr. Pritchett is retaining five acres to the west to build his home site as well. As of last year, at the beginning of last year, just north of our property, we have two hundred feet of frontage along Meadow Avenue. Like I said, it is privately maintained at this time. Sims Planning approved subdivision by the name Oliver Estates with a similar amount of frontage, which was actually split into two properties. So there's a new home site that was built within a year in the rear of that property where they took two hundred foot of frontage approximately and made two lots. Here, we're just seeking two hundred foot along Meadow Avenue to have one lot, one residence, along with Mr. Pritchett's remaining five acres. So two residences on a seven-acre piece, and that's what we are seeking today, is a waiver of whatever format regulation that satisfies the county to allow this subdivision to move forward. And, you know, if you have any specific questions, I'd gladly do that. I know Mr. Pritchett has signed up to speak, along with Mr. Walt is one of his neighbors. He's here to speak as well, so I'm gladly field any questions you have or concerns. But we're here to seek a waiver of the regulations to allow this one-lot subdivision.
Commissioner, senior district, you have any?
I don't have any particular questions at this point. I would defer to our county engineer, who, it's our engineering department, who has recommended disapproval of this request, of this application, and I'll defer to Mr. Kegley to give an explanation for that.
Sure. Would you like our other people to speak first?
I think that might be, I think that might be appropriate, Commissioner, if we just go ahead and let the other speakers.
All means.
And then Mr. Kegley can speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Come down, state your name, please.
Anthony Pritchett. Good morning, Councilor. All I'm asking for is just an access to this lot that my brother is going to build on, and I'm going to build just to the west of him. My mother is getting older, and so him and I came together. I bought the property, and did not know that it would be this hard to actually to try to get a access to, just to get on to the property on the end that he picked out. But all I'm asking for is just an asset to the property, and I think it's off of Prince. But I don't know no more to do, but to come before y'all with it, to look at it, review it. I think I emailed Ms. Hudson to try to meet women to take a look at this. This is in her district. But I don't know no more to do. There's attorney involved in this to try to get some type of resolution pertaining to it, where we can compromise to just to have a six-road from a county-maintained road, which is Prince, I think it's Prince Drive. But I do have Mr. Walker here, as he is my neighbor, and I don't think they have any objections as far as into doing it. But I will just ask him, he'll come up to speak. He has to speak regarding to this on his own merits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Walker?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's hard, hard. My hearing is not as good as it should be, and so it was hard to hear what was going on. My wife and I, fifteen years ago, bought Lot Number One on the plat you probably have a copy of on your desks. And we moved in from Phoenix, Arizona, and we've lived here quite happily. We are in retirement. In fact, we have a late marriage. We've been married twenty-two years, and now we find ourselves both in our eighties. And so Lot Number One is adjacent with this dirt road that has been in existence apparently for fifty years, going back from our property over almost four hundred feet. And it's been used by about, with six houses approximately, with about less than twenty people. Go up and down, and has been self-maintained by these people. And that opens up onto the street going down into the big subdivision below us. What he's asking for, and I'm not sure I could hear anything that he said, I believe, is at the other end of the property adjacent to what could be an entrance from the subdivision. And that would be on the south, no, it would be on the east end of the property. Opening that up to that subdivision so that they could come through on this dirt road as a shortcut into Sims would be a catastrophe for us. And that is probably the only thing I've welcomed. I've welcomed Tony and his family and the purchase of the property, and as well as the other members of our small little community along this dirt road, have welcomed him. And we hope, look forward to him building a home, having his family there, and prospering. And I thank you for letting me come and make some comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brian, can you give us some idea of where you feel like the problems are and why we would turn this down?
Yes, Commissioners, the applicant approached us. His survey company produced a plat that is deficient in several areas. We have reviewed that multiple times.
Brian, it's, excuse me, it's a little bit hard to hear.
A plat was created by the engineering firm representing Mr. Pritchett, submitted to our office. It's deficient in several areas. We have reviewed that multiple times. We've relayed the deficiencies to them. They have refused to make modifications to comply with the existing subdivision regulations. We have recommended not approving this. It's quite simplex. They're just absolutely refusing to abide by the subdivision regulations, and we're not willing to grant what they are asking us to do. We've never allowed what they are asking us to do and don't intend on starting now.
So if they do apply to these regulations that you referred to, you don't have a problem granting it?
Not at all, Commissioner.
Are you aware of these issues?
That's what we hear here before you. There have been several waivers. I've been a part of probably ten to fifteen in the last seven, eight years. The problems here stems in since January with the Planning Commission Forum being dissolved. This would have normally fell within their commission. Back in two thousand and one, there was a plat recorded for this lot that Mr. Pritchett owns. In that plat, it's getting very complex, in my opinion, it's not simple. The property was signed by the county engineer, deemed a public road in which public right-of-way was acquired for the county for future use should they pave that road. You know, since then, you know, we're asking for simply a waiver of the regulation in which, it's not, it's kind of some gray area there on fronting of a public road. We're adjacent to the east of Prince Drive, and what Mr. Walt was speaking to, if I can clarify that, is he does not, he would prefer access to come off of Meadow Avenue, which is currently the private road in which he mentions the twenty people. He doesn't want that opened in any format to Prince Drive to create some type of thoroughfare for King's Branch, which has, you know, hundreds of homes. I believe that's what Mr., he may not can hear me, but that's what Mr. Walt was alluding to, is that he would prefer it to come off of the existing. What happened in two thousand and one, and this was brought up in a call last week, is that the Planning Commission at that time deemed that even though it was a public road, they denied access to Lot Seven. I've been dealing with the Planning Commission for over thirteen, fourteen years, and it is commonly brought up at that forum in which notes that are placed on plat, you have an opportunity to amend those notes. For whatever reason it was put on that plat, we simply would ask for that to be removed, and that it would be allowed for access to come off the privately maintained road in which, like I mentioned before, the subdivision to the north was just created last year, signed off by the county after the Sims Planning Commission approved it. So whether that comes off of Prince, we're trying to get access for his brother to build a home on this two-point-two-acre lot. We're not developing this into six, seven lots here on a private road. It's simply a resident for Mr. Pritchett and a resident for his brother. And so that's what we're seeking. If there are deficiencies in the plat in which the county believes there are, we're willing to work with them to correct that, should there be approval by the commission today. We're simply asking for a waiver of any and all issues with the plat to allow the one-lot subdivision to move forward, so that one residence can be built on this property, and Mr. Pritchett can go on, he plans to build his house, he's waiting on this to go through in order to get his house started. So that's what we're seeking today. So I'm asking that if, because I don't, I'm not a lawyer, okay? But in two thousand and one, this note was put on the plat. The Planning Commission, if they were represented here today, could tell you that has happened time and time again where we have approached the commission to remove that note. Now that they're dissolved, I believe it's your opportunity to then remove that note if there's any concern about it, and allow access to this privately maintained road for this additional residence. And so that's what I'm seeking here today.
Commissioner, I am all in support of helping Mr. Pritchett be able to move forward with his plans. However, we cannot just arbitrarily, willy-nilly go against the recommendations of our engineering department. Now, what I would recommend is that you and the county engineering department come together, and whatever deficiencies exist, that you address those, and if those can be addressed, I don't see that we would have a problem. Is that correct, Mr. Kegley?
That would be a correct statement, Commissioners, if they were willing to abide by our recommendations and by our requirements, but at this point, they have refused to do so.
Can you summarize what those would be? How detailed are those? Is it too detailed?
It is very detailed, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we at least address, can we address any type of paving or any requirement that would be an exorbitant amount of cost to the applicant? Because that was brought up specifically in a conference call, and I would just like clarification from the commission to know what exactly are we being asked to do as an applicant in this case?
Are we asking them bring the roads up to county?
Not to county standards, no, sir. Subdivision regulations have criteria associated with private road subdivisions. That is what we are asking them to abide by, and at this point, they refuse to do so.
So what's the biggest hurdle?
The biggest hurdle?
Yeah.
Is here today getting approval. I believe that the clarification has not been made on how much, you know, when you say private road standard, is it still twenty feet of asphalt, eighteen feet of asphalt?
That has been relayed to them in detail, Commissioner. I don't really think we need to hash this out in a public forum.
I would agree. I think that there needs to be, if you're interested in moving this forward, I would highly recommend that you sit down with our engineering department and look for a way to reach a compromise or to meet whatever requirements and regulations, because these are there for a reason, and they can't be, as I mentioned, arbitrarily disregarded.
Commissioners, they have not requested that this be withdrawn off of the agenda. It will not and cannot be approved as submitted, therefore, we have recommended disapproving. If they would like to make some modifications to abide by the regulations, we'll be glad to work with them, and they can resubmit at a later time.
Rarely do we go against the engineers and their opinions, so I'm going to encourage you to let us pull it off the agenda and see if you can work it out with them, either that or...
No, sir, it does not need to be pulled off the agenda. It needs to be denied as submitted.
It's actually been denied already.
All right.
So, I mean, a holdover of any sort is just out of...
It does not need to be held over.
Anything can be brought back before us. Anything can be brought back, but only when it is in, and it's been approved by engineering. If they agree that this waiver can go forward, then we can do that. But otherwise, today, it was already disapproved. And, but like I said, it can be brought back if the problems, the deficiencies are taken care of.
Are you suggesting that they have to start over? That they can't go back in with an existing application? And if they decide that they're going to move, that they want to move it forward and comply?
Would it be a new application altogether, Matthew?
As presented, they could update their application. You know, we asked for the plat to be disapproved as presented, but they could update their application, or they could submit a new application. There's no cost to the applicant to do business with Mobile County as subdivisions go, and so the simplest and cleanest thing is often to start with a new application. It's not mandatory, but there's no, there's no cost. There's no delay. If it's disapproved, they don't have to wait any period, so the hurdles are minor.
Okay. So we have voted on this.
It's already been?
Yep, it's been voted on.
Disapproved.
Let's move forwards.
Fifty-four.
Oh, I just wanted to, this weekend, it sounded like we had an ongoing problem with our air conditioner in the jail, and I just want to compliment Tyler and his team, because they were solutions-oriented, communicated well on what was happening and what they were doing. And this little thing that they rigged up to, I shouldn't say rigged up.
It's working. Whatever, they worked.
This innovative solution.
There we go.
To air, keeping that pod, air conditioner, till we can do better, I thought was great. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And it was a weekend, too.
And I would absolutely agree, echo those sentiments. He did a great job of keeping us all apprised of what was going on, and thank you, Tyler. I can't even see you, but thank you.
All right, and I have three quick things. We've got the retirees this August first. We have Rita Fay Baggett, twenty-three years. Russell Collins, twenty-four years. Frank A., excuse me, Lee A. Franks, he's got the same problem I've got, two first names, nineteen years. Veronica Lane, twenty-eight years. Terrence Thompson, twenty-eight years. And Melvin Scarborough, twelve years. I would like to thank them for their service as they retire. And we have royalty among us this morning. Congratulations to Commissioner Luckgood for being recognized by the Alabama Bar Association with the Maude McClu Kelly Award. Did I pronounce that correct?
Close enough.
Good.
For what is the award?
I was going to, getting to it right here. The award is named for the first woman attended to practice law in Alabama. We got in a debate this morning whether she still practiced laws or not, anyway. It is presented each year by the women's section to a female attorney who has made a lasting impact on legal profession and has been a pioneer and leader within the state. Congratulations. And last but not least, Mr. Kegley, our condolences to you and your family. I got to spend a little bit of time with you and talk about your dad, and he seems like a pretty remarkable guy. And as life pushes on, I just want you to know you're in our prayers. We've all talked about you this morning, and anything we can do to support you and your family, we're here for you, okay? All right. We do have an indigent board, care, Mobile County Indigent, Indigent, easy for you to say.
Indigent.
Indigent Care Board Meeting. So let me close that meeting, and I call to order real quickly the Mobile County Indigent Care Board Meeting.
Before you do that, I'm going to move that we adjourn the first one.
And I'm going to second that.
There you go.
Now, we're there.
There we go. That's what that hammer's for. All right, so let's get this meeting going. Glenn?
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of the June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
Number two, accept report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund at June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Funds available, two hundred and nineteen thousand, one ten oh two.
Some move.
Second.
Number three, approve the disbursements of Indigent Care Fund cash receipts of July twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, for the period April two thousand and nineteen through June two thousand and nineteen, to the following entities in the following amounts.
Some move.
Second.
And number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Have a good day. Have a good day.